Okay.
I can provide some updates to the data center projects that are going on right now. First, last week, there was supposed to be an appeal of the zoning officer letter that went before the zoning hearing board. That was stayed by the court. The proceeding, the zoning hearing board proceedings were stayed in order to determine whether the zoning hearing board has the authority to review the appeal that was submitted. Second, there are several opportunities coming up for public participation. We received the Phase Two of 216 Greenfield Road as a land development plan yesterday. So that will be coming before you in the near future as we work through all the comments. Again, we just received it, so we don't have much to provide right now. The data center text amendment is going to be introduced to the city council on October 6th to their committee, and then it will be provided to you for review for the October 15th meeting, which will also be another opportunity for public comment, both at city council and at the planning commission. And the only other update I really have right now is that Carissa has stated that they will be holding a public meeting, but no date has been established for that. Do you have any questions for me? But that's all I have right now.
I'm sorry. Could you clarify what the public meeting was for? Maybe I just lost track of, for the amendment?
Well, they'll be, they're all public meetings, so there are always opportunities to. There's not a set public hearing yet. Once the text amendment is at that stage, there will be a public hearing for that. But right now, you can comment anytime at any of the public meetings. As far as the public meeting, Carissa's proposing, I don't really have any information on what the agenda would be. I just know that it is in their plans to do so.
Thank you.
So, I want to state a concern that I have. At two meetings ago, I had made the comment that we should request documents related to the data center, and it was suggested that I do a right-to-know request. The response to that right-to-know request was that these documents don't exist. And this is frustrating to me because when you look at the decision letter for the data centers, I'll read some of the first paragraph and some of the last. "After a review of the information you and your clients provided to me and other," this is the zoning officer writing, "after a review of the information you and your clients provided to me and other members of the city's planning staff, and based solely on that information, I have made the determination that the proposed use of the property located at 216 Greenfield Road as an electronic data processing warehouse is permitted wholesale trade and storage in the zoning district." I'll paraphrase that last bit. Where my concern is in not having any documents provided to me through this right-to-know request is that the last paragraph reads, "Based on a review of this information and the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance, I have made the determination stated in this letter as the zoning officer for the city of Lancaster, PA," there's a repeated sentence, "should use in fact, should the use in fact defer from the facts set forth above, the assurances and opinions forth in this letter shall not apply." So to me, that reads like these documents, what was proposed to city staff is critical in validating the determination that was set forth. It was acknowledged here that, yeah, I said like a stack of documents, but some documents should exist. Where, so that we have nothing to hold the entity to account for the use at this point because we're saying that these things don't exist, and it's the reflection of the use that has been approved. And it's concerning to me because these are the kind of conversations we as a public are having about other issues in society. Being told files exist, suddenly files don't exist. I think that we do need to bring back the idea of having a public hearing to hear from planning staff at this point because we're getting nothing from other avenues of government. The appeal has been stayed. We don't know when that's going to be restarted, but we need the facts for this instance so that we understand what was looked at, what was approved. And I'll stop myself there before I go on a whole roll down a hill, but we need facts, and we're not getting facts. The public is not, if we're submitting right-to-know requests and being told these documents don't exist, like what is up?
Mr. Dastra, I would encourage you to attend the city council meeting on Monday to express your concerns.
Yeah, but my concern is that this mentions the planning staff. Like, if I'm being told that these documents don't exist, we're the planning commission, and according to this letter, some planning staff was privy. This is back in September, the 23rd, September 23rd, so Betsy, you were not here at that point yet. But we need to know who those planning staff members are, and we should ask them to clarify what has been reviewed, and frankly, under oath. And that's where the public hearing has value because we need to understand the facts of this case.
I would again reiterate, I don't agree that a public hearing is the appropriate place to do that. I know that Lauren, I think, was the only one in attendance as far as I'm aware of the September meeting. Obviously, I wasn't here yet, so I can't speak to that. I can't speak to any of the documentation that was provided, or if any was provided. I think they talked about the plan, but I don't know that there were any notes from that meeting or anything like that. Obviously, there are not if they're not able to provide them to you through a right-to-know request because that should be provided if we have it.
Just for your information, I have submitted all of my email correspondences regarding the data center to our attorney with regard to the Right to Know Act. So every correspondence that I had regarding the data center has already been submitted.
In this correspondence, was there any sort of draft plan put forward, like more of a land development type documentation? So only written correspondence, just words?
There was no, there is no land development.
Right.
It was a zoning decision.
So, but what I'm asking is-
I was, I was on the, only on the periphery.
Okay, so-
So typically, what we would do if someone's coming with a question is they'll have a pre-application meeting where they provide a plan. They typically don't give it to us, like, in a PDF format or any paper copy. They bring it as their own personal records, and we don't keep those. So that's my understanding of what occurred. But again, I was not at the city at that time.
And I understand that you might have been only on the periphery of this. The, obviously, the zoning decision letter doesn't in itself dictate who is where in these conversations. It just mentions zoning staff and planning staff. But the fact that we don't have documents available to the public when there is quotations of what was, had been submitted to the city is a concern for me because we're quoting something that supposedly doesn't exist.
I completely understand that. I just don't think that the planning commission is the correct forum to have that conversation.
I was content with not having the public hearing when we were going to have a zoning hearing board appeal on the issue, which is in the courts right now. But I guess my question would be, why do you feel a public hearing is not appropriate?
Because a public hearing is free to take action, and there's no action you can take regarding this issue, other than a recommendation on the text amendment and determine, like, an approval or denial on the land development plan that comes before you, when it's before you.
Tony, what do you hope to get from a public hearing here?
Statements of fact that are under oath.
From?
From anyone who we invite to participate and will sit here before the public and answer questions.
That's not the purpose of a public hearing through the planning commission.
I would agree. I don't think we're having the correct tools here to fulfill our duties to the public. I think what's important to emphasize here, and I think this is what's kind of gotten lost in translation, is that if we put aside the data center topic and just focus on the process here, a zoning determination, as is performed by the zoning officer, is actually typically a very routine and fairly very short process. There's not some large internal meeting generally. It's usually a handful of planning bureau staff. Sometimes it's just the zoning officer, correct me wrong, who examines the zoning ordinance and makes its determination if the use is permitted under the zoning ordinance or not. And the fact that the data center use was determined through that process does not change the fact that that's a very typical process that's done through the city. And so I think we need to be careful here about trying to, while I appreciate the intent of trying to pursue information of being transparent, which I fully support and think that we should certainly do that. And this is something I think we talked about a little bit a couple weeks ago, is that because there is so much public attention on this specific use, it's important for the city to, I think, be over-transparent in showing what this process was and just how it typically works and, you know, what the land use process typically dictates. But I think we need to be very careful about saying things, to be quite frank, that we need to have staff under oath because I think that casts aspersions of misconduct that I don't think is your intention, Commissioner Dastra. But I think we need to be very careful here about trying, about unintentionally building a specter of something that's not actually there. So I think this is where we need to be very clear and concise about what our role is here in this process and what our purpose is in helping the city navigate through this particular project, this particular use. And as staff has pointed out, the planning commission does have a very administrative rather than legislative role, where we are really here to look at land development plans, look at land uses, and make determinations based on the policy documents that are in front of us, which is the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, which I can appreciate for those who are here concerned about this use can be frustrating because that, but at the end of the day, you know, I think what needs, what a lot of people are speaking towards, as has been pointed out, is a conversation for city council, who are ultimately the arbiters of the legislation, the codes that we operate under as a planning commission. Of course, that doesn't mean we can't be a forum for discussion, for helping folks understand the land use development process and how it works. And I think we should certainly do that in future meetings. But I think as has been pointed out, you know, we need to be careful not to go beyond our brief as a planning commission and talk about holding public hearings or having staff come and testify under oath because that's not an appropriate fit for what our body is for. So I think those are my thoughts, with all due respect.
I started getting involved in city government because of a great distrust in government. What's happening, what's happened, has fully emerged in me, those sentiments again, frankly. I'm having trouble processing this myself because if we're looking at doc, if we're being told that the use is approved based off documentation, that the public submits requests for information, right-to-knows, and they're not receiving, unfortunately, no, it does give me aspersions of potentially misdoings. Like, government is a very finicky thing that can do great things for the public, but when the, when government doesn't work well, it does terrible things for people. So I feel like we need answers as to what is going on, and if it's not a public hearing, then, okay, fine, so be it. But what are we gonna do? I mean, if we're, if we're really just here to talk, then like, yeah, I understand why the public gets kind of disinvested in government because people want to know what was actually proposed to city staff, and currently, we are still in a total void of information.
And again, I would just say that it's not that we're trying to deny you that information. What we're trying to explain is that this is not the correct forum for that. That is not the, that is not what the planning commission is established to do. And so, yes, we absolutely can have discussion here, but there is no action to be taken by the planning commission. And that, I mean, that underlying everything, taking the emotion out of it, much to what Porter said, you can't, you have to just understand what the process is. And fortunately, or unfortunately, the planning commission is not the place for this process. City council is, and it has, it is going before city council. It will be before city council multiple times. There will be a hearing at city council. It will then, the, when the, when the plan, which has now been submitted, comes before the planning commission, the public can come and they can comment on the plan because the plan is something that the planning commission can take action on. And that's all I'm saying. All I'm saying is that you have to understand the process and where government grievances, even, where they belong. And this particular grievance does not belong in the planning commission.
Sure, but-
It's just that, it's just that simple.
When it even comes to process, we haven't followed the process on other text amendments before until now.
We're not talking about other text amendments.
No, but we should because you're saying we're talking about process, and even this year, we put forward text amendments that got sent to city council that didn't have a formal request, as was, we're doing in this now, because suddenly, as soon as we're starting to advocate for our community on issues that aren't, that aren't coming up there, we now have to stick to this letter of the law, whereas precedents prior in this room haven't been followed. So it's hard, I get what you're saying about process. I can appreciate that. But we haven't followed proper process. So I'm having trouble in, like, I've been trying to learn as much as I can to understand process in some of this. So I do get what you're putting down, but it's hard for me to hear about, I need to understand process once it becomes clear to me that we didn't, as a, as a government, didn't understand or were negligent in following process prior.
Yeah, once again, it appears as though city council, coming before city council to make your plea. And I think perhaps on the next go-round, things may be done differently, but it appears as though it's clear the way things were done on this, this, this time, and you have to take your fight to the city council in the hearing.
So I guess my only question then is with the land development plan being put forward and city council having made a formal request for a text ordinance, where does it leave us when the land development plan comes to us? Are they going to be required to, are we, is the city taking the position that what is going to come through to us as a text amendment needs to be respected by the developer for this land development plan coming forward? Because there is case law that at least when text amendments are recommended, they start, they're not solid yet, but they start to take effect. And the reason I'm asking this is because I drafted an amendment that was circulated, and that's where I was talking about process on. Members of the public are now aware of this drafted amendment, and I believe it has had some edits from members of the public as well. So I guess I'm asking, where does that leave us when we're reviewing the land development plan?
So the current land development plan that was submitted yesterday is submitted under the current ordinance.
Great.
Any further commission comment? Any public comment?
Okay, I got it.
Thank you.
I can't believe we're going to play hot potato with this. My name is Frank Arcolio. I live on Old Trinity Place. This isn't the place for it, but guess what? The council isn't the place for it either. The administration is the place for it. And this body unanimously requested that zoning officer Thresh and Mayor Sarachi come here and just explain to us how they made that determination. Tonight was supposed to be the big reveal. How could they possibly do that? Well, guess what? How could they possibly break all the rules of English, right, and how the English language works, to secretly, without telling anyone, classify AI data centers as warehouses? That is just ridiculous. So they were invited to come here and tell us how they could do that. And guess what? They're not coming. And so we found out from the other of the musketeers, Chris Delf, that they're not coming. Why? Because they don't have to. What are the three possible reasons? One is a refusal to admit incompetence, that they incompetently called a data center a warehouse. Is the moon made of green cheese? Is that what we're going to claim now? Can the zoning officer claim that? Is it possible that if we classify, call Three Mile Island a nuclear facility warehouse, that somehow it becomes a warehouse and is permissible on Greenfield Road? No, it is not. It's ridiculous. It was incompetent, and that is where we stand. In fact, even the zoning determination letters that, that were referred to before by Mr. Dastra are full of errors and redundancies. This was totally and completely incompetent from day one. So that's one reason why they might not want to be here. A second one is arrogance, and the reason that was given does kind of smack of arrogance. It said that this body lacks jurisdiction. That's the polite way of saying, screw you. We're not going to come to you because we don't have to. And that's, that's what they're saying. The third is simply cowardice. They won't face the public. They're going to keep their head down, and you know what? After all, in three months, we're going to be rid of them. We're going to be rid of all of them, so they're never going to be held accountable for this ridiculous malfeasance. So which one is it? Well, you know what? I think it's all three. I think they're incompetent. I think they're arrogant, and I think they're cowards. All three together. And I think they should be ashamed of yourself, and anyone who supports those three things should be ashamed of themselves too. So luckily, we really do only have three more months to put up with this nonsense, and as the planning expert says, we have to live with supposedly, live with a ridiculous determination that was done back in February and nobody was told. Well, I tell you that I'm the one who appealed it, and we're going to win. We are going to win. We're going to beat them, and, and this is just totally and completely ridiculous that this could ever, ever, ever possibly go this far without any scrutiny whatsoever. Thank you.
Any further comment from the public? I would ask you to, if there's anything that was already said, for you not to repeat that, so just give us new information.
Right, of course.
State your name, please.
My name's Austin De Silva. I live in Leola. Used to live in Lancaster City, moved back out to Leola a few years ago. I don't have as much energy as the guy before me, so I'll just try to be brief. Echo some of the sentiments that he shared, and I have some concerns about the zoning as well, the warehouse listing. I believe there's currently no category inside of zoning that would include AI data centers. So there's not really a precedent to determine what the use would be for those data centers. I just have a few statistics that I'd want to share, and this is publicly available information on the U.S. Energy Information Association. Let's see here. So for wholesale trade and like a warehouse, for a 300,000 square foot building, on average, they use around 2,800 gallons per day of water. For a similar category, mercantile, they use about 10,000 to 12,000 per day. But for the average data center, they use around 530,000 gallons of clean water per day, and that's clean water, not groundwater, runoff water, to just cool these data centers. And that's as much as over 6,000 households. So I think that's a reason why a lot of people in public and in Lancaster are concerned because you have this data center coming, it's going to use so much natural resources. They also use a lot of electricity. Look at other states like Oregon and Virginia, 33% of their energy on the grid in Oregon is used by data centers, in Virginia, it's 37%. So I think a lot of people around here are concerned that we're going to have some neighbors, some AI neighbors that aren't necessarily going to be the best to live beside as far as resource use. So that's the comment I would have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comment, further?
Hello, my name is Sarah Hanley. I live on the north side of the city. First of all, yes. And second of all, I do appreciate that you guys are feeling frustrated because we have a lot of like anger and we're pissed off, and since personally, I don't know where to direct it, I don't know who's responsible, and I have gathered that you guys are not responsible, so I don't want to direct it at you. Just, just point me in the right direction. Who is responsible for saying, yes, we will build a data center? Who do I have to yell at? I'll yell at them. I don't want to yell at you. Who is it? Is it the zoning commission? Is it city council? Because my, my understanding was that there was going to be a big meeting that my friend over there said, that like everybody was going to come, and it was, we were all going to get to say, hey, we're mad, nobody wants this, why is this happening? And then it got canceled, so now we're all just kind of here twiddling our thumbs and not going anywhere. So how do we make that happen? Are you allowed to respond to me?
This isn't question and answer. It's a comment period.
Okay. Listen, I don't know how this works. This is my first time.
I would encourage you to attend the city council meeting.
All right, I'll be there. Anyway, appreciate you. Thank you for serving the city. God bless. I'll get out of here.
Any further public comment? Okay. B. Comprehensive plan? Ms. Logan?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? In front of you, I apologize, we had printer issues, and this did not get printed out for you. This is just a general update on our comprehensive plan. I think the TVs are working now, so you should be able to see them. If not, I apologize, and you'll have to turn around. And I'm, Lauren will send this out. I just was able to finish it this afternoon. So right now, this is just a very general summary of what's going on with the comprehensive plan. There are 79 total action items that were created in the comprehensive plan. Currently, eight are in implementation phase, so that means a portion of them have, like, I'll use the Parks and Open Space Plan as a reference. It's been approved and adopted, but it hasn't, like, it's in the implementation phase. Ongoing is very similar to that. There's currently eight ongoing projects right now. However, they might be policies such as our home repair policy- However, they might be policies such as our home repair policies that aren't really something that it's being implemented, but it's not going to be complete because it's going to be an ongoing item. And we don't really know when that would end. There's 12 items that are in the planning stage, 20 that are currently being worked on right now, and then two are complete. And then I provided below kind of the top five of what has been accomplished per each of these. Below that, Lauren, I don't know if you're able to scroll down. But for implementation, and I guess I used the wrong example. We've had the home repairs program, which is currently being implemented. That probably should actually be an ongoing. The Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, the Vision Zero Plan, which has been approved and is in implementation as well. Our Housing Strategy Implementation and Targets is being implemented as well as the Climate Action Plan. Ongoing is the municipal fleet conversions, neighborhood leadership program, engaging underrepresented groups, green stormwater infrastructure, and emergency preparedness. Currently in progress, some of the plans are the Age Friendly Action Plan, the Sunnyside Master Design and Nature Preserve, the Tourism Master Plan, Street Design Guidelines, and the two-way road conversions. And then in the planning phase would be all the ordinances which we've discussed, those that are currently under, proposals are currently under review to update the zoning, subdivision and land development, the official map, the Greenway Connection and Extensions, as well as floodplain management are kind of, we're talking about it, and we started the process, but they're not in full like review right now. And I can provide more specific detail if you have questions on any. We're working on a dashboard, which would be more in-depth than what's provided for you right now. But if you have any questions on any specific project and where it would be at in the status, happy to answer any questions.
When do you think we'll get the zoning updates?
So we have, the September 10th was when all the proposals were submitted. We have, we got seven proposals. We have 60 days to review those and to provide, to work on a contract with a consultant.
Oh, so we're still in like finding the consultant part of planning? Okay.
Mr. Polite had to excuse himself for a minute, but he should be right back.
Do we want to just move on?
Can we just move on?
I think that's.
Yeah, okay. Yep, we can just move on to C. So it's for C. I can just bring this, hold on. I can change the. There we go. And so this is just kind of an update. So the planning commission is generally nine commissioners. We are currently operating with seven commissioners and two alternates. So one of our priorities is to, of course, get back up to nine. And we have a few members who are going to time out. Their term is going to end in December of 2025. And so we also need to make sure that we don't drop even lower. And so we've been working on finding new commission members. And so to that end, we kind of started with some of the low-hanging fruit. So for example, Ms. Shirk, Commissioner Shirk's term is ending in December, but she will come back for a second term. And so that will be in front of the city council as well on October 6th. And then we have also nominated a new member. His name is Theodore Griffiths, and he will also go before the city council on October 6th. He is nominated to replace Steve Hackett's seat. Steve resigned. The reason why we're doing this one first is, quite frankly, because it's the easiest. Steve's position was called an at-large position. So as some people may or may not know, the planning commission has regions. And so we have regional representation, and then we have at-large members. And so when we replace a regional member, we have to be very careful that the person is a good representation of that region versus when it's an at-large member. Anybody can apply for the position, and it doesn't matter what their address is. So Mr. Griffiths actually lives in the southwest, so we already have representation from there, but he can serve as an at-large member. And so he, again, he will go before the city council. And assuming all that moves forward, he should be in place by the end of the year so that we will gain him as a member. We are actively interviewing to fill two seats. One is Region Four, which has been empty since last December and represents a section of the southeast. We've been interviewing, and we're getting close. And so we're hoping to have somebody for that in November. We're just waiting on a couple of more things. And then Commissioner Ortega Brown, her term is also about to time out, and she has decided not to renew. So we will be replacing her on the commission, and we are also actively interviewing for her region, which I believe is Region Eight. Is that correct? So, or Seven must be, because there's not eight regions. So maybe it's Six. I don't even know. But so it's Six. It's Region Six. Anyway, she's in the northwest. So if you're interested, if you live in the southeast or the northwest and you're interested, those positions are open, and I'm looking to fill them quickly. But we are in the process of interviewing for those already. We're also considering the impact of the upcoming election on our commission membership and the likelihood of, for example, having to replace Commissioner Stoltz, who is running for city council. Mr. Stoltz has an at-large position as well. And so we are, we have somebody in mind for that, but we have to wait until the election, obviously, to make any movement on that. And so with all of that being said, we are hopeful to have a full planning commission by the end of the year. We're also aware that both of our alternates are finishing up their terms, and we'll get to refilling those once we get the full commission on board.
Question. How many specific regions are there, and how many at-large?
And so it's seven regions. I think, is that right? You're six regions. It might be six regions. I'm so bad at this. I can pull up the map and double-check it. And then I think we can have two to three alternates. Up to three, right.
And are applications for those still open? Like folks can still contact? So FYI, for folks in the audience.
You send an email to me? And yep, and so and I interview. So based on your resume?
Yeah, you should provide a resume as well. But it's a volunteer position. You don't get paid.
So just to clarify, the three alternates are the at-large, or the three at-large are the alternates?
No.
No, okay.
No, the alternates, the alternates are also at-large, though. They're not specific to a region, but there are at-large members on the commission. And then there are alternates.
Yeah, maybe it'd be good to have like a social media post or something.
We've done that. Thank you.
Or like just something we can share actively with people in the community we know. Here you go. Here's a link. Click that. Three is a mix of the two eastward annexes in the city. It doesn't have to be contiguous area. So those two, that's one region, but it has a geographic separation.
So it's six. It's six regions. It's six regions and then three at-large for the nine members. I misspoke, I'm sorry.
And Lauren, I know a couple of months ago, we were going through almost line by line with the bylaws. And is there any movement on that? Any changes or things we need to clarify?
And so they have to go through, so they have to go to our solicitor. So some of the bylaws can be changed by just the planning commission. And then some of them need to go through our solicitor because they have to correspond to the MPC. And so we just thought it would be easier to do it all in one swoop as opposed to like coming in and changing certain things and then having to go back and change other things. And with everything else that's happening, it kind of took a back burner. Which is why, again, like as of now, everything that's taking place in terms of replacing the commission and how we're moving forward is just exactly the same as it is now. And then we'll worry about adjusting the bylaws probably early in the year, early in 2026. We'll have a fairly new commission, and we'll probably take that time to do some training refresher and to look at the bylaws and to have elections. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Number five, staff report.
Okay, so it's back to me. I guess the big things to highlight in terms of the land development, of course, Ms. Logan already referenced the data center being submitted. And so that is, they are submitting as a preliminary, not a preliminary final, which is important because they are not waiving their preliminary. And what that means for people in the public is, it means it's an extra round through the planning commission. They're not trying to get, they're not trying to short-circuit the planning commission or expedite the process in any way. They're going to go through the whole thing. And so it was a September 30th plan submission. So for point of reference, that then goes out to our consultant, and then it comes back to staff for review. I will share that we are already planning meetings between the developer and the planning, I should say the reviewers, because it's not just planning staff who does the review, to go over literally like line by line for technical review. And then it will come before the commission, and the commission will get to comment on it, as will the public, at a preliminary stage. And then it'll go from preliminary to final. And so this will be, again, a process where the commission will have input and the public will have input. But first, we need to get through the technical review.
And may I add something about this? Because I know we have a lot of fresh faces in the audience and some who've come multiple times. When we hear the word consultant, sometimes it just seems like we're just bringing in, bringing in, bringing in people to do that work. Is this the consultant that we hired almost because, not outsourcing, but can you explain that relationship?
No, it is. It's very much like outsourcing. And so the consultant that we use is CS Davidson, and we use one staff member from CS Davidson all the time. He reviews all of our plans. He's been doing so for over two years. And so he's pretty much.
Like a retainer?
Yes, pretty much like a staff member. He meets with us every other week. We go over, he prepares reports for us. And so he does the first review because it's highly, highly technical, and we don't have the capacity to perform that kind of review in-house and do all of the other things that a planning bureau is required to do. And so by going through that way, and then it comes back to our staff, and it gets distributed to many people. It goes through the engineer, it goes through stormwater, it goes through the historic commission, it goes through zoning, it goes through the water bureau, it goes through sewer. And so all of these people have eyes on the plan. It's not just the planning bureau. We do not just review it by ourselves in a corner. Everybody gets their eyes on the plan, and then once they've all looked at it, then it comes to the planning commission. So it's a fairly lengthy process.
Are we going to review the plan even? Okay, let me back up my words. The appeal for the data centers is currently stayed by the court, but obviously, if that's moving forward, that impacts the developer. Are we going to, is the planning commission going to look at and potentially approve a plan prior to those procedures being done? Because I feel like that actually is a disservice to the developer if the courts were to have it go through zoning hearing board at that point.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
So you're asking when, sorry, you're, just to clarify, you're asking if, as it goes through the zoning hearing board process and it's appealed, and the appeal is approved saying that it does not meet the definition of the warehouse district, then how would we review the plan? Then if that was determined, it would need to come back to the zoning hearing board for a special exception. If it was determined to be a special exception with a use not provided for, I would anticipate that that would not be a short process because I'm sure they would appeal anything as far as they could.
Sure.
So.
I guess maybe I should ask.
I don't know that I know the answer to your question.
No, valid, completely valid. Maybe I should ask, like, does the planning commission have a requirement to go through and review the plan as-is if that's just what the developer wants and they have to deal with the repercussions of whatever other legal decisions occur?
Right. So for, in the state of Pennsylvania, I mean, the property owner has more rights as far as what can and can't like be gone through. And I think part of their, part of it has to do with like how much money they've already invested into things. So I couldn't tell you like the legal process. If like everything got overturned, it would probably take like two to three years to go through. We have to review the plan as a permitted use. But then we would be checking it for all of our other ordinance requirements.
Okay, so just like keep on going as things are currently, but if anything were to come out to say otherwise and affect the plan, it's on the property owner then to go through whatever they need to go through?
Correct.
Okay, that's, yeah, thank you, Vetsky.
Aside from the data center, because there are other things, the, we also have another new land development that came in through SACCA, and they're going to be building some apartments on South Duke Street, which will be very interesting. So that also just came in very recently. So that's going to make its way again, first through CS Davidson, and then back to staff, and then into the planning commission. So you can look forward to that one as well. I don't know if there are any other updates that are, that are needing to really be announced. You've just, we've just had like a slew of reviews and approvals. So other than that, things are just moving along. The Sheets land development is just about done. They're getting ready to record probably within the next week or so, as is 623 Stevens Avenue, which was the Thaddeus Stevens plan. And the Thaddeus Stevens dorm as well, actually, is. And the Thaddeus Stevens dorm as well, actually, is in the process of being signed. And so probably within the next couple of weeks, we're gonna have three new plans recorded and then they will start, they'll start construction. So I think that that, I think that that's it. Anything that's of substance.
Thank you. Any public comment?
My name's Jake, I live in Lancaster and I'm still curious about one of the questions that one of my peers here proposed earlier. Whom is it that we are indeed supposed to talk to if we would like to share concerns about the AI data center if this is not the forum to do so?
City Council.
What about post-technical discussions that you mentioned? You said the Lancaster City Planning Commission was going to have another preliminary meeting. Is that a place for the public to opine or not?
Sure. I mean, so the, a couple of things. One is that they, the plan has been submitted as a preliminary plan. It will come before the Planning Commission. Now that's something that the Planning Commission can take action on. And so the public has a right to weigh in on that, which can, you know, sway the commission. That's what they're here for. They're gonna listen to what the public has to say and they're gonna decide whether or not they want to approve a plan. And so.
If the plan meets all the technical requirements of the ordinance, it's not something that they can just deny.
Right, they can't just take it down because of opinion. It has to meet technical requirements.
So provided that this plan meets zoning requirements, no one has the power to deny it?
If it's technically sound, no.
If I may just add, if I may just.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think what we're talking about is the difference between the actual construction on the site and the establishment of the use on the site.
Correct.
I think the establishment of the use, just wild guess, that's what's really the concern of folks that are here in the room today. So I, I think, just my own personal perspective, probably the, any hearings related to the ordinance amendment, that's gonna be proposed. And correct me if I made my language.
No, no, you're correct. And so I think that it is important that there are two different processes happening right now in parallel. And so one of them is the review of the ordinance. The review of the ordinance is going, it's, it's making its way through City Council. So it's gonna be at City Council multiple times. The first time it's going to City Council is this coming Monday, October 6th. It will, the ordinance will then be submitted to the Planning Commission as well as to the county for review.
I'm probably gonna get some pushback on this, but we also have to make sure plans are coherent with the comprehensive plan. And as you saw earlier, we're in the process of adopting those things into action. So I would encourage you and other members of the public to come to that meeting with as much knowledge as you have as possible of the comprehensive plan, because that's a soft power of the commission as well. The comprehensive plan, our, our future Lancaster, I don't know a web address, it's on the city's website, but it's a, it's a little booklet basically in real life and it speaks to the, okay, you know what I'm talking about. Yeah, so I would encourage the public to come with a full knowledge of the comprehensive plan to that preliminary plan meeting.
That meeting on October 6th for the City Council or the follow-up preliminary Lancaster City Planning Commission meeting?
When it comes to planning commission for review.
And we don't have that date yet.
If you'd entertained me for a little bit longer, you mentioned earlier all of the various powers and people at play here and how it's not strictly the Lancaster City Planning Commission. When you say that I would be well advised to speak to the City Council, is there any particular group or subset or persons involved there?
No.
Understood. So October 6th and then date to be determined?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And at the request of the Planning Commission, I think two meetings ago, we did update the website FAQs, it has all of those, what we have is our tentative outline for public comment periods during the ordinance process. As we have more firm dates for when Planning Commission will be reviewing the data center plan, we'll be sure to update that FAQ so it has the dates.
Thank you. Any other further, further public comment?
Hi, Chris Reber with LNP. So the, there's a plan in for Phase Two of 216 Greenfield Row, is that right?
Correct.
Not, no plan for 1370?
No.
That is being considered under the old ordinance because they fire, filed a, or the current ordinance, because they filed an application for land development and that was the ordinance that was in effect, right?
Correct, the ordinance has not been passed by City Council.
The first phase of 216, is there anything that, that says that that would not be affected by a zoning ordinance amendment? The current one, one that's under construction, since there was no.
There's no land development.
And filed, there was no application for land development.
Correct.
So, so they are following, they, it has been approved because building permits have been approved and part of that is the zoning review to say they meet the zoning requirements for, for Phase One.
The, the determination.
Yeah, just signing off that a permit is allowed to be issued based on zoning is, is the determination.
So, so there's no chance that someone could come back and say you need to comply with a zoning ordinance amendment?
No.
Well, I guess the only thing that's questionable is where the appeal is in that process and how long that takes to get through and what the final outcome would be.
Thank you.
But nothing that would be in the near future.
Right.
Any other further public comment?
Sorry, I'm confused about the order of operations here. You've said multiple times that the developer that's building the data center is going through a preliminary process and is still like submitting papers and stuff to get approved. But they've already started building and like spent a lot of money? How, how does that happen?
The project is happening in phases. So Phase One did not require any land development. They've just entered into Phase Two and they've submitted for land development.
Okay, so they were just fixing up the, changing the building that was already there?
Interior.
Got it. And that doesn't have to get approved by any kind of.
Does not have to be approved by land development.
It's like demolition, I think, that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
There was mention, you mentioned the comprehensive plan of Lancaster. Checking the website, the URL is broken. Is there anywhere someone could gain a physical copy of this booklet?
Sure.
As a question, can I ask where?
Here. Do we have some upstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we don't have to do that tonight, I can pop in at another time. Is there anybody who would be willing that, for me to get in touch with to?
You can reach out to me.
Excellent, thank you. And, oh, and you as well.
All right, I mean, I would, I would be the one to provide the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so is it okay if I reach out to you after this meeting, get contact information?
Absolutely. Please say your name.
My name is Jessica. I live with someone who owns a house here in Lancaster, but I just want the booklet. I travel for work, so can I get the booklet tonight?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second that.
We have a motion to adjourn the meeting and also a second. Ready for the question? All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Both, ayes have it, most in carry. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your participation from the public and comment and concern. Thank you.